Alderman, we're going to start committee of the whole soon.
Alderman.
Alderman, we're going to start the committee of the whole.
Alderman Martinez. Alderman Martinez. Alderman Felix.
The time is now 5:32 and I would like to call the March 3, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. Roll call. Alderman Martinez.
Here. Aye.
Felix. Alderman Felix. Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Donnellworth.
Present.
Florian.
Present.
Hayes.
Present.
Bolton.
Present.
Guzman.
Present.
Okay. Alderman Felix. Thank you. We have a quorum. I need a motion to seat Alderman Tom Hayes as pro-Tom Mayor and Chair for the March 3, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
I so move.
Second.
Bolton and Martinez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is it, oh.
Motion carries.
All right. Is it okay if I take it from down here? Oh, all right. Okay. The time is now, we have to take a roll call, everything, right? You haven't done that yet? Okay, sorry. I just walked in. Time is now 5:33 on Monday, March 3, 2025, and we are calling the Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Present.
Newsome.
Present.
Turner.
Aye.
Donnellworth.
Present.
Florian.
Present.
Hayes.
Present.
Bolton.
Present.
Guzman.
Present.
Mr. Cherry of a quorum.
Thank you so much. Can I get a motion and a second for, to approve the meeting minutes from the February 18, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting?
So move.
Second.
First from Alderman Martinez, the second from Alderwoman Newsome. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda item number two is audience time. Is there anyone in the sparse audience that wishes to address the committee about anything that's on the agenda? Anyone at all? All right. Agenda item three, special order of business. Can I get a first and a second to go into closed executive session?
I so move.
Second.
First from Alderwoman Bolton, a second from Alderman Martinez. Roll call, please.
Before we roll call, the grounds for going into.
Thank you.
Grounds for going into closed session will be discussing pending litigation pursuant to Section 2C 11 of the Open Meetings Act, and then a second ground which would be the appointment of legal counsel pursuant to Section 2C 1 of the Open Meetings Act.
Alderman Martinez.
Thanks, counsel.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Newsome.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Donnellworth.
Aye.
Florian.
Aye.
Hayes.
Aye.
Bolton. Guzman.
Aye.
Motion pass. We are waiting for Alderwoman Newsome and Alderman Donnellworth. All right. We will start momentarily, then.
All right, is everybody ready? If you could take your seats. Time is now 6:35. We're going to call Committee of the Whole back to order after exiting executive session. And I'll note that everybody, everybody is seated for the meeting. So let's proceed with agenda item 4A. Can I have a first and a second? My understanding was Alderman Felix was going to make a motion, so I'll give you that opportunity now.
Yes, I want to make a motion to move up the wrap allocation item forward.
Second.
Second.
The motion in this, a first by Alderman Felix, a second by Alderman Guzman is to accelerate agenda item 4C, or to move it ahead of A and B under old business. Are there any questions to that?
All you need is a voice vote on this. No roll call necessary.
Okay. Can I just, I just want to make a quick point on this. If, do we have enough time? Because if that's, there's going to be a presentation on this point to talk about what we did before and what we were proposing to do now, and we have 25 minutes until the meeting starts. So I just want to flag that as a potential issue that I don't know that we'll get through it.
Is there, since we already talked about this multiple times, can we just go skip everything and go straight to the vote?
I think the developer's asking for a million dollar check.
No, 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 no. This is the wrap money.
And there are two proposals up there. There is.
Oh, okay.
Mayors, and then, and so we're going to, we'll go, I will be quick in my presentation.
If we can, I mean, at least to get it through.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Agenda item 4C is further discussion of revenue allocation plan. There's various sponsors, Corporation Council. I will pass it off to you for a presentation.
Is, one more slide. Keep going. It actually says 4D, I think. Yes, okay. Yeah, 4D. All right, we are continuing in the discussion with the city's revenue allocation plan. The revenue allocation plan is the discussion and asking for guidance on how to spend the money that has been accrued to date generated by the temporary casino. The amount projected through the end of this fiscal year, which will be April 30, is projected to be $16,476,700. We have two proposals. The mayor and staff have proposed, have created a proposal, and then Alderman Felix, with the support of Alderman Turner and Guzman, submitted an alternate proposal. Alderman Turner had also submitted independently a proposal for six ward only. Some of those items have, some of that amount has been incorporated into Alderman Felix's proposal. At the last meeting, the committee agreed to allocate $1.2 million to the repair and replacement of the library's HVAC system. On tonight's main city council agenda, there will be a resolution approving an inter-fund transfer from the casino tax fund to the library capital fund. So that's, that's how this will basically be put in place. Once you guys come to a consensus, we will prepare resolutions that authorize formal transfers from the casino tax fund to the other accounts, the destination accounts that you agree to. That was a unanimous recommendation from the committee last, last week, so that's why it's on the main city council tonight. One of the issues that I would ask you guys to take note of is that tonight we will also be discussing in the main city council agenda, the request by the developer, the Waukegan Community Development Partner, to not use TIF funds for the $900,000 upfront, and instead use a source of funds that would not be encumbered in the same way TIF are. So I would ask you guys to keep that in mind as you make your recommendations. We'll start with the, a quick summary of the mayor's plan, and I would note that on board docs and provided to all the, every single one of you guys in your paper packets is a, a page that looks like this. It has a summary of the mayor's proposal, and Alderman Felix's proposal, and Alderman Turner's proposal. So everyone has these numbers in front of them. If you could go to the next slide, please. Proposal includes a full allocation of $16,250, the largest being to risk management. The next, the next items being lead service line replacements, fixed asset replacements, downtown parking garage repairs. As I said, 1.2 million, which has previously been committed, are ready to the library HVAC. Washington Street corridor, Phase 1 engineering. Seahorse Drive, Phase 1 engineering, engineering services ongoing. Actually, that should have been, I think that should have been 500,000, not 50,000. I'm actually, okay. The next slide. This is Alderman Felix's proposals. There's, there's definitely some overlap here. The biggest difference is that Alderman Felix proposes allocating only 5.5 million dollars to the risk management reserve. Risk management reserve, just for those following along at home, would be a specific fund set aside for legal judgments against the city to basically ensure that there is cash that is available due to either expected or unexpected legal, legal judgments or settlements. Downtown streets and sidewalks, a water rate study for the possible expansion of the system, downtown parking garage repair, the previously committed library HVAC amount, Washington Street corridor, that's an overlap with the, what was proposed by the mayor, a new rescue boat for $600,000, water systems upgrades, $2 million, engineering services 100,000, sidewalk repair and traffic calming, 2.5 million. That 2.5 million was specifically allocated to many of the things that Alderman Turner had identified. Next slide, please. Alderman Turner had asked for 3.2 million for sidewalk repair and street and alley resurfacing and traffic calming devices at 14 separate locations. I didn't include the full detail there. So what I would ask is, as you discuss this tonight, if you can find, if you can find points of agreement and consensus, you can either find a plan that you agree on, and there are enough votes to support, or you can go line by line and find ones that support in the same way you did for the library HVAC. But just, if you're going to have a decision on that, please call for a vote on each one.
So maybe the best approach is to, is that it for the presentation, counsel?
That's what I got.
Okay, great. Thank you. So maybe running with that recommendation, is there anything that we can agree on tonight, like we did last meeting, to try to accomplish? At least tick off some of these items so that we can continue to move it forward and kind of chip away at, at what we're going to use the funds for. Alderwoman Florian.
Yeah, I was going to suggest we maybe first vote on the things that are pretty much the same on both lists, so we at least get that done. So I believe the downtown parking garage repairs are the same on both. Washington Street corridor, we all agree that's vital. Let's, let's get that done. And engineering, the numbers are off a little bit, but both have, you know, engineering services on here. Let's come up with, and let's at least vote on those. It's already 6:44. There's probably going to be discussion on some of the other stuff, but since these are the same on both, how about we hit those first?
I agree.
And vote on them.
Alderman Floran, and to add to that as well, I see Waukegan Library, we also agree on that, right?
Already voted on that, so that's done.
Just pointing that out, thank you even for the audience, so we know that.
Excuse me. Thank you, Alderwoman Florian. I have a question about the parking garage. If, if we're prepared to move toward a vote on those three items, I thought that the 1.5 million dollars had been allocated out of the TIF. Was that right?
It can. We can, and there's 5 million on, right now. Well, now it's less because we voted to buy the, the land by the bank, the associated bank, but there's close to 5 million dollars in there, and I think we can use it, and it wouldn't affect us as a development deal would, right, Stu? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, there is, Tom, can you, do you know off the top of your head how much is in the TIF 8? I think it's, I think it's a little bit over 2 million, with 500,000, 500,000 of it specifically committed for, well, only 375 of it with that amendment being committed. So there, there are funds available in TIF 8 for that, but then you have to keep in mind about the 900,000 that you'll be discussing later tonight.
Alderman Martinez.
Yeah, I don't want to steer us off course, but I mean, I was wondering, what, what happened to the fire department that we talked about in Station 3 and the third ward?
I'm sure we can get an update on it, and I'm happy if you want to do it now to try to do that, but we have 14 minutes before.
But I just want to, you know, put it in everybody's mind that that's something that we had discussed, and I don't want to, you know, fall too off course, but I think that's something that we need to discuss and bring it back to the table sometime near in the future.
All right, understood. I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. Was there another question? Alderman Guzman?
I, I mean, for me, I'd like to vote on the complete package. I mean, I'd put, I worked with Alderman Felix on a lot of these. It was in my original proposal for this allocation of funds, because if you notice, at the beginning, the, the mayor's allocation for funds was totally different than what it is now. It has changed over time. It adopted a lot of the stuff that I wrote in the beginning, and then I have spoken to other aldermen, and we looked at the consensus of other aldermen on what would be the, would be the best choice for allocation of funds. And I think we have a consensus with Alderman Felix, myself, Turner, and other aldermen that have proposed this. So I'm going to put a motion to actually vote on the complete 4D for citywide proposal for Alderman Felix's proposal for the wrap money.
Okay, and thank, you've made that motion, but I mean, I think there's going to be a lot of questions before we vote on that.
Yeah, I second it.
And then I'll, since with the second, I'll call the questions so we can call the vote. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for doing that. In, in the meantime, people have an opportunity to ask for, ask questions, try to get additional information. If you want to take this as a full package, then I'm going to give everyone the opportunity that they need to ask whatever questions they may have. So your proposal, the motion that you've made and that's been seconded by Alderman Felix is to vote on Alderman Felix's proposal in its entirety? Is that the motion?
Correct, as entirety.
Okay, Alderman Turner shaking his head. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, hold, so hold on, was, was there a second to that motion?
Alderman Felix.
Okay, clerk, do you, are you clear on where we are?
Got Alderman Guzman and Alderman Felix on item 4C, right?
Okay, so this is, this would, the, the motion would be, before you start discussion, would be to recommend the allocation of the casino revenue funds in the amount of 15,700, which would also include the, the parking garage repair, which you'd previously discussed, so you have to consider that, to the, the items that are listed on the sheet under Alderman Felix's proposal. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. So in my experience, when we try to rush things along, it frustrates a lot of people. So I'm going to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to ask their questions. First question being Alderwoman Florian.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm not finding the information I need on what I have here. So in your proposal, Alderman Felix, I don't know if you're listening.
I take my motion out, just so you know. Take my motion out. And if we can at least pass these things that we agree on, at least get that done today.
Can the second withdraw a motion, withdraw a motion, or does it need to be the, the first that withdraws a motion?
The second can withdraw their second, and then it is a motion awaiting a second, and then if it doesn't have a second, then it dies. So are you, do you want to withdraw your second? Okay, so the, Alderman Guzman's motion now is back on the table, awaiting a second.
I guess, I guess I'm going to remove it because I thought we had consensus on this. I mean, if you look at it, Alderman Turner asked for street repair and streets and traffic calming devices, they're on there for 2.5 million dollars. Look at downtown streets and repairs and sidewalks, it's on there. Look at the waters, water study, water rate study for possible expansion of the system. This is what I proposed months ago. It's on there for, for us to get revenue off our lake, our, our water supply. We're looking at the downtown parking garage. This is, was offered by the mayor and the staff. It's on there. The rescue boat, I mean, I'm sorry, if you're drowning, I mean, you want the best of the best coming after you as quickly as possible, and it's on there to save lives and to be dependent. The water system upgrade, water system upgrades, we get tons and tons of water main breaks, and we're just basically doing nothing with it, and it's on there. You're talking engineering services, it's on there. I, I don't see, I mean, risk management. Originally, you asked for 10 million dollars. I asked for 5.5 million dollars.
Alderman Guzman.
Hang on, hang on.
No, no, I just, I need a question, sir. What's your question?
Well, I'm giving it, why is everybody so against this? If everything's on here?
Okay.
Everything. Risk management asked for 5.5 million. Risk management asked for 5.5 million dollars and was happy to say over 10 years. We reduced that from 10 years. I was going to do it for seven years and we reduced it to day one. So ultimately you'll have $10 million in that account.
All right, does anybody else have any other questions?
Okay, so just, just to be clear, Alderman Guzman's motion remains?
Thank you, Council.
No, I removed it.
And it waits a second.
I'm going to remove it.
You're withdrawing, okay.
Yes, that's what I was saying. I'm going to withdraw my motion, but I wanted everybody to be clear about this, about what this proposal entitles. It, it's very broad. It, everybody's concerns are right on the dot on that.
Not everybody's, sorry.
I'm just going to make a general comment here since we have eight minutes before city council is supposed to start. I would like to accomplish something in this committee. I think that we can agree on at least a few items on here that we could move forward, just like we did the library last week. So if we can, perhaps if somebody has a motion on a few line items that match in both proposals, maybe we could advance those this evening.
Can I suggest the 1.5 that we need for the garage? If we have consensus, to take it out of the TIF 8?
There's not enough money in the TIF. That's why we can't take the money out.
I will second it.
That is budgeted as a, as a TIF expense right now. So that is budgeted as TIF expense. Alderman Felix put it in here as something that could be covered by RAP, but what you're basically saying is you're taking that out of your RAP proposal and that it should stay as a TIF expense.
Okay, why? My question is, why are we, why are we now switching again?
So I wanted to make sure we allocate the RAP, the RAP money. So then once we go talk to, talk about the development deal, there's money for the development deal.
Can we just?
But you want the, you want the development money out of the TIF?
No, it's going to be coming out of the RAP. We'll discuss the, what our lawyers and their lawyers came up with.
Anybody have any questions or comments regarding taking the parking garage repair funds of 1.5 million dollars out of the RAP funds and putting it back in the TIF? Which I know it's already been allocated within the TIF budget. Any questions, any comments? Okay, we're voting on, the motion is Alderman?
Alderman Newsom.
Oh, Alderman Newsom, yes.
I just had a question regarding this $600,000 boat. Didn't we just buy a boat for the fire department or did we?
And Chief, I think Chief Bridges, is he here too? No, he's gone, okay. I think that it was small or something like that along the lines, too small.
Sorry, I don't think your mic's on.
Bad what, chief?
Why, why can't we just buy that out of the capital replacement fund?
Why can't we fix the motors?
I'm sorry?
Why can't we just fix the two motors on that boat?
It's not big enough.
It is big enough, that's what we have it.
Are you expecting a mass drowning?
If everybody, Alderwoman, Alderwoman Newsom had the question, so you have the floor.
Okay, okay, we can go on and vote for what we agree on, okay.
Well, the motion now is to remove the 1.5 million dollar line item out of Alderman Felix's proposal for the parking garage repair and to vote to have that money taken out of the TIF instead so that Alderman Felix feels that there's enough money for the allocation to a developer.
So it looks like what's left on both lists, we could at least do risk management for 5.5, even though the mayor wanted 10. So we could do risk management, this is my motion. Risk management for 5.5 million. Washington Street Corridor, Phase 1 engineering for a million. Engineering services for 100,000. I think that's the only three that are left.
I second that one. Let's, can we just at least move it forward that? And then we'll vote on my motion that's on the, or do I have to vote on mine first? Mine's first?
You're?
1.5 first.
There was another motion.
I'm going to, as a parliamentarian, I'm going to say that that motion is not actually necessary. Because all you're, what you're, all you're doing right now is saying these are funds that we are going to take from the casino tax fund and move towards the specific reasons. If you're not going to spend something, you don't have to motion it.
Okay, but I can do it at the end to do it.
Well, I think, I think we can just say that that is not going to be coming out of RAP money. So staff who had budgeted it originally out of TIF should just continue to budget out of TIF 8. If you, I mean, if you, if you want to make that point, that's fine, but it's not necessary.
A quick question. Once we did decide to, it has to come back to us to allocate those funds to come out of there, right?
Yeah, so what's going to happen is there'll be a fund to, this is in the case of the HVAC, to the library capital fund. For these other ones, it's going to authorize the transfer of to Risk Management Fund, Washington Street Corridor, and Engineering Services.
Can we call, call the vote?
We can call the vote so long as we're clear on what we're voting on.
Okay, so there was a motion to allocate 5,500,000 to the Risk Management Reserve, 1 million to the Washington Street Corridor, Phase 1 engineering, and 100,000 to General Engineering Services. There was, the first was made by Alderman Florian. The second was Alderman Felix. And now if there's no further discussion, you can call a vote or you can continue to discuss in the two minute we have.
If there's no questions, a roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez?
Aye.
Felix?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Turner?
Aye.
Donaldworth?
Aye.
Florian?
Aye.
Hayes?
No.
Bolton?
Aye.
Thank you, I.
Okay, motion passes.
Can I make a?
All right, we have, it's 6:59. I think it's time to shut, shut down the Committee of the Whole.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I want to make a motion first, please, to continue until we're done with allocating the money.
Continue what?
Continue the discussion.
No, we have a city council meeting that starts at 7:00. That's what the public notice says.
But we can, can we move, can we continue if we need to?
If I make a motion? They continue, continue right now?
Yeah.
Well, someone could call a motion to adjourn, which is, you know, it's, you can have a motion on the table, but someone can call a motion to adjourn.
There's, a motion to adjourn's already been called and it's been seconded.
I'm sorry, guys, for the record, Alderman Guzman's, well, it was not on the record. Was it your vote?
Okay, well, my motion is on the table. Well, you need, you need to vote for the thing.
All right, guys, let's, guys, it's 6:59. Let's, let's straighten this out.
Alderman Guzman's vote was not recorded on the last vote. Can you please state your vote?
Well, I'm very disappointed. It should have been all of it. It's only a certain ones and it keeps holding off. This is like our third or fourth meeting. Aye.
Thank you. Now, we had a first and a second for a motion to adjourn.
Actually, actually, it was Alderman Felix's motion before you did your, your, to adjourn, so I'll second that.
No, we had a motion to adjourn and we had a second.
Yes, no, you had a motion to adjourn before you got my vote.
All in favor of adjourning?
The moment, the minutes can reflect that.
Listen, listen, let's just, let's just attack this professionally, okay? We have a city council meeting that starts at 7 o'clock. That's what we told the public, that's what's on the public notice. That's what we do every other week. We've had our time for Committee of the Whole. When we started Committee of the Whole or when we readjourned or when we came back after executive session, I said we don't have a lot of time. You said let's squeeze in as much as we can. That's what we tried to do. And frankly, given our past record, I think we were pretty productive. Now, let's adjourn Committee of the Whole. We'll regroup, we'll come back at the next meeting and we'll continue to hopefully productively tick off other items on the agenda. Will you withdraw the motion to delay the city council meeting to the whole?
Well, I don't. So if you, you know, if we can continue, I would like to continue another 30 minutes to get as much done as we can.
All right, if that's, if that's the motion that was?
If you guys support it, that'd be great.
Guzman gave him a second.
I understand.
So there was a motion to continue discussion, seconded by Guzman.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Martinez?
Nay.
Felix?
Aye.
Newsom?
Nay.
Turner?
No.
Sorry, Donaldworth?
No.
Florian?
No.
Hayes?
No.
Bolton?
No.
Guzman?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not even going to ask if anybody's opposed.